Starly.
Hi, Starly. Yeah. There you go.
How's it going?
Good.
Yes. Yeah.
We're okay with that.
You join the meeting or?
Okay, yeah, it's seven one two.
Time is seven one two. I'll call to order the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Attendance by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. You can join the meeting. There's a link, phone number one six four six five five eight eighty-six fifty-six, meeting ID seven ninety-five nine five zero dash seventy thirty-five, passcode is nine oh seven one four eight. Moving on to agenda, item number two, serving out the commission this evening remotely is Greg Peresino, Starly Arias, Diane Carroll, in person, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner, Martin Connor. Moving on to agenda, item number three, minutes for approval, A for seven twenty-one twenty-one, do I have a motion, please?
I'll move the minutes.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
Starly Arias.
Starly, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving on to agenda, item number four, public hearing scheduled for seven PM Wednesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A special exception twenty-one dash zero nine in site plan thirteen seventy-eight. Applicant is Alan Realty, Inc., locations eight sixty-one New Arlington Road. Proposal gasoline sales installation, excuse me, install gasoline dispensers, canopy, parking and landscaping, building facade modifications. At the applicant's request, this is being moved to September eighth, twenty twenty-one. It will not be heard this evening. Moving on to agenda, item number five, old business, A re-subdivision special exception twenty-one dash zero six, applicant Allied Engineering Associates, Inc., location five zero one dash five zero four Essex Court, assessor map two thirty-four block zero zero two lot zero zero six. Proposal re-subdivision, two lots and multifamily residence in the R six zone. The public hearing was closed on seven twenty-one twenty-one. Marty, you have a summary?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I wrote a memo to the commission dated August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Allied Engineering Associates, Inc., for Princess Properties, LLC, has applied for a two-lot re-subdivision and a special exception approval to construct a four-unit multifamily on the new proposed lot. The property is located within Square Hill condo complex. It's owned by Princess Properties, LLC, and is twenty-three point four nine acres in size. The purpose of the re-subdivision is so the property owner can sell the existing four-unit multifamily dwelling at five oh one to five oh four Essex Court with zero point nine one one acres of land. This property will be known as parcel A. The remaining twenty-two point five nine acres with a proposed four-unit multifamily dwelling will become parcel B in the re-subdivision. A special exception application has been filed to demonstrate that the remaining land in parcel B can support a four-unit multifamily dwelling. They have no immediate plans for construction in the multifamily dwelling on parcel B, but they are required to demonstrate the parcel B will be a buildable lot. The property is located in the R six residential zone where multifamily dwellings are permitted with special exception and site plan approval per section three point one subsections one point three zero and section six point eight of the regulations. A public hearing was held and closed on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one for both the re-subdivision and special exception applications. Re-subdivision plans titled Proposed Re-subdivision Plan Prepared for Princess Properties, LLC, Queens Road, Torrington, Connecticut, sheets C one through C three by Allied Engineering Associates, Inc., dated six two twenty-one, and architectural plans titled New Building, Square Hill Condomines, Mufield Road, Offlinstead Road, Torrington, Connecticut, by John Martin Associates, dated December first, two thousand and three, sheets A eight, Row of View. Public testimony was received at the public hearing from several residents questioning the rights of Princess Properties, LLC, to utilize the roadways within the complex to access the two parcels A and B and their obligation to pay for maintenance to these private roads. Questions arose as to who would be responsible for any damage done to the roadway should damage occur from construction vehicles building a multifamily unit on parcel B in the future. Attorney Ebersol, representing the applicant, indicated that they had deed rights, access rights over the roadways, and Minishaw Ketharia of Princess Properties testified that he presently shares in a proportionate share of access, maintenance, and repair. Attorney Ebersol indicated that Mr. Ketharia would provide documentation of the rights to access the roadways and responsibilities for access. I met today with Attorney Roebach, who represents Princess Properties, LLC. I reviewed a memo attached prepared by Attorney Roebach dated eight ten twenty-one along with access easements filed on the Torrington land records that demonstrate that parcels A and B both had deeded access easements over the private roadways in Square Hill and also had a responsibility to pay a proportionate share of the cost of maintenance use and repairs of the access easement areas. No additional conditions of approval would appear to be required as the maintenance and repair damage should damage occur on the roadways due to construction on parcel B in the future, they would have to pay their fair share. Also included in the memo from Attorney Roebach were copies of invoices to Princess Properties for roadway maintenance and canceled checks to show these invoices were paid. Conclusion, I recommend the commission approve the two-lot re-subdivision. I also recommend the commission approve the special exception application for a four-unit multifamily dwelling on parcel B, making a finding that the special exception application for the proposed four-unit multifamily dwelling on parcel B meets the general and specific standards for special exception approval with the following conditions. One, prior obtaining a zoning permit for construction of the multifamily dwelling on parcel B, the applicant shall submit a revised site development plan for the planning and zoning commission approval that A addresses the comments from Assistant City Planner, Jeremy Lifer, AICP, contained in his memo to the city planner dated six thirty twenty-one; B addresses the comments from Assistant Public Works Director slash City Engineer in an email memo to the city planner dated six fifteen twenty-one; and C addresses the comments from Public Works Director Ray Drew in a memo to the city planner dated six twenty-five twenty-one. Two, it's recommended the applicant follow the advice of Fire Marshal Ed Vaseta, contained in his letter to the city planner dated six five twenty-one.
Thank you, Marty. Just as a reminder, the public hearing is closed. There will be no further testimony this evening on this. Attorney Roebach, thank you for the documentation that you provided to Marty's office. I appreciate that. Any commissioners have any comments? If we're to go to remote, please?
Yep.
Okay. Marty, seems that everything is pretty much in place here. I'm satisfied with the documentation that Attorney Roebach put forth, proving that ARF and airfare share and so forth, there's easements and so forth in place. I think it's a viable decision here. So, I have a motion here. Somebody can make it. I'll read it. Planning and Zoning Commission, date August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, motion to approve re-subdivision special exception twenty-one dash zero six, applicant Allied Engineering Associates, Inc., location five oh one to five oh four Essex Court, assessor map two thirty-four block zero zero two lot zero zero six. Proposal re-subdivision, two lots and multifamily residence in the R six zone. The public hearing was closed on seven twenty-one twenty-one. The commission makes a finding that the special exception application for a four-unit multifamily dwelling on parcel B meets the general and specific standards for special exception approval with the following conditions and recommendation. One, prior obtaining a zoning permit for construction of a multifamily dwelling in parcel B, the applicant shall submit a revised site development plan for the planning and zoning commission approval that A addresses the comments from Assistant City Planner Jeremy Lifer, AICP, contained in his memo to the city planner dated six thirty twenty-one; B addresses the comments from Assistant Public Works Director slash City Engineer in an email memo to the city planner dated six fifteen twenty-one; C addresses the comments from Public Works Director Ray Drew in a memo to the city planner dated six twenty-five twenty-one. Two, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Fire Marshal Ed Vaseta, contained in his letter to the city planner dated six twenty-five twenty-one. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Have a good evening, sir. Moving on to agenda, item number six, new business, A site plan thirteen eighty-two, applicant Fuel Cell Energy, Carol Michael Lasowski, location five thirty-nine Technology Park Drive. Proposal fuel cell test facility upgrade. Is the applicant in attendance, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
State your name and address, please, for the record.
Chairman Mealy, my name is Derek Phelps, P H E L P S. I am Director of Market and Project Development. I handle government and regulatory affairs for Fuel Cell Energy.
Thank you very much, sir. Please continue.
If I may, I'd like to begin by simply saying thank you to you, Chairman Mealy, and City Planner Connor, and distinguished members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for giving us your time this evening and for your careful review of the matter that is before you. As a housekeeping matter, I'd like to introduce others on our team that are in attendance this evening, including Larry Hoffman, who's part of our project development team, Derek Healy, who is with Elm Electric, and Joseph Yulavikas, who I believe is present in the room before you. And if it is to your satisfaction, I think I'd like to maybe provide a little bit of a backdrop and history about this project and give you a little bit of an overview of what it is that we're seeking your approval for this evening.
Please, thank you.
So Fuel Cell Energy, as you know, is located on Technology Drive in the industrial park. We have a manufacturing facility there that we expanded just a couple of years ago when we employ, I want to say, a little over currently three hundred and twenty employees there. In two thousand and nine, we sought and gained approval from the Connecticut Siding Council, which has, under Connecticut General Statutes, exclusive jurisdiction over power generating facilities and fuel cells specifically, with respect to a test facility that is outdoors on our, I'll say, our parking lot to the west side. And in subsequent years, we've needed to expand that, and we have sought approval from the Connecticut Siding Council and in two thousand and sixteen sought approval from your commission with respect to the expansion of that test facility. The test facility is really quite critical and integral to our work as it relates to testing out new technologies, which is a very big part of our business. And what's before you this evening is something that arises from our collaborations with the mayor and Mr. Connor. We, under the terms of our approval from the Siding Council, need to advise the Siding Council about any changes to the previously approved project. We did that earlier this year. And then, I want to say, in late June, we met with the mayor and Mr. Connor to explain what it was that we were seeking to do, which is essentially to expand our test facility by about seventy by eighty feet. It involves restriping six parking spots, which we are also reassigning on another boundary of the property. The consensus that was reached was, notwithstanding the jurisdiction of the Siding Council, we're, you know, we are proud corporate citizens of the fine city of Torrington, and we wish to keep Torrington apprised at every turn about what we're doing because frankly, we're proud of it, and we are grateful for the partnership that we have with the city of Torrington. So upon Mr. Connor's advice, we filed an application for a site plan modification, and that is what's before you this evening. So if you have any questions, I'm available, as well as other members of the team that I've introduced.
On the plan, you have, obviously, you've taken up parking spaces right there. It looks like you're adding additional parking spaces with this, correct?
That's correct, sir. And I, you know, notwithstanding the alteration to those parking spots, we, as I think the memo that's before you from Mr. Connor outlines, we are actually well positioned for parking at our property.
Do any commissioners have any questions at this point?
No.
All right. Marty, you have a memo, please?
I wrote a memo to the commission dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Michael Lasowski, Fuel Cell Energy, has filed a site plan application to upgrade the outdoor fuel cell test facility at five thirty-nine Technology Park Drive. The property is owned by TPR Associates, LLC, is thirty point thirty-eight acres in size. It's located in the IP Industrial Park Zone. The existing manufacturing use is a permitted use in the IP zone per section three point one, subsection nineteen of the zoning regulations. Plans submitted are titled Fuel Cell Energy, five thirty-nine Technology Park Drive, Torrington, Connecticut, zero six seven nine zero, by Borgazy Building and Engineering Company, Inc., dated seven twenty-nine twenty-one, sheets SP one through two. Also submitted is correspondence from the Connecticut Siding Council, dated twelve nine oh nine, approving the installation and operation of the test facility in the PowerPoint presentation titled Torrington Test Area Upgrade dated July twenty twenty-one. The Connecticut Siding Council previously reviewed and approved the outdoor test use in conjunction with the manufacturing of fuel cells. The expanded test area is approximately eighty by seventy in size. The applicant needs to modify the outdoor test facility site to enable them to test new products and electrical equipment. The commission approved the existing outdoor MCF testing pad crane and control building at their August tenth, twenty sixteen meeting, site plan number eleven ninety-seven. In reviewing the application and plans and documents submitted, I have the following comments. The test facility upgrade will be located adjacent to the existing outside test facility on the north side of their building in the existing parking lot. They will restriped six parking spaces in the existing lot to make up for parking lost due to the expanded, expanding the outdoor testing area for fuel cell testing. There is ample parking available on site. There will be no change in impervious surface. The expanded test facility meets the zoning setbacks. The nearest residence is approximately five hundred and fifteen feet south of the outdoor test facility site. The testing area will be fenced in. Three, staff met with the applicant and made a site visit to the property. Other staff comments, Architectural Review Committee, due to the nature of the project, it wasn't referred to ARC. Inland Wetlands landscaping, writing and signage, Jeremy Lifer, Assistant City Planner, zoning and wetlands officer, in an email memo to me dated eight eleven twenty-one, indicated, "I reviewed the information submitted for the test facility upgrades to the fuel cell facility at five thirty-nine Technology Park Drive under site plan application thirteen eighty-two," and offered the following comments. Wetlands, there are watercourses in the vicinity of the project, but none are located within seventy-five feet, the upland review area, for the proposed equipment to be added to the site. Therefore, no inland wetlands permits are required. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for the application. Landscaping, no landscaping appears to be proposed or is recommended as part of this application. Writing, no additional outdoor lighting appears to be proposed as part of this plan. If any new lighting is proposed, it should be added to the plans, and a photometric plan should be included to show compliance with the lighting regulations. All exterior lighting proposals shall be in accordance with the requirements of section five point seventeen of the zoning regulations. Signage, it appears no other signage is proposed as part of this application. All new signage shall be permitted in conformance with section five point fifteen of the zoning regulations. Any new proposed signs over thirty-two square feet in size will require site plan approval. Engineering, Paul Constance, PEW Deputy Public Works Director slash City Engineer, in a memo to me dated eight two twenty-one, indicated, "The engineering department does not foresee any issues with regards to this site plan application and therefore endorses this application." WPCA had no comments. Police traffic, no comments were received from Sergeant Baldus Police Traffic Unit. Fire Marshal Ed Vaseta, in an email memo to me dated eight ten twenty-one, indicated that at this time I have no questions. And building official Kevin Gillette, in a memo to me dated eight two twenty-one, indicated, "Building permits and complete IBC section one oh seven construction documents will be required," and of course, that would be as part of the building permit. Conclusion, I recommend approval of a site plan application to upgrade the outdoor fuel cell test facility at five thirty-nine Technology Park Drive with no special conditions or recommendations.
Thank you, Marty. Just a couple of questions, if I may. Obviously, this test facility is electrical in nature, testing the equipment. So basically, there's no specific noise that's generated with this on a daily basis, correct?
Yeah. There is what I would describe as some white noise because we run some fans routinely. This is a tri-gen facility primarily, and we run, this is for beta testing units that come out in support of some of our emerging technologies like electrolysis. So it would be incorrect for me to represent that there's no noise, but it's, it's...
You're blocked by the existing...
You're not gonna, you're not gonna hear it at the property line.
Right. Yeah. Because this area is adjacent to the woods on one side and up against the original building.
Yes, sir.
For the most part.
That's correct.
All of our technologies is on the other side. So it's away from the residents in the area.
Typical operating hours, is there anything in place? Is this a twenty-four-hour situation to, you know?
Yes. So what we generally have to do with our new units is we need to test them for reliability, and as you may understand, we represent and market ourselves as around-the-clock baseload resource that is available to our, that provides service to our customers around the clock. So it's not like we turn these things on at nine AM and turn them off at four PM. We do have to run them around the clock.
And then as far as the construction schedule, again, equipment and so forth, it's...
Yes.
...the building, it's...
So thank you for asking that because I wanted to circle back to that upon when we got to the end here. Next step for us, of course, is if you see fit to vote affirmatively on the matter that's before you, our next stop is, of course, to pull the building permit. Our scheduled window for construction of the expansion of this test facility is September twenty-first through January. This should not take very long. We've got to do some restriping of parking spots. We're going to expand the test pad, as you know, by about seventy to eighty. We've got some fencing that we have to do. This is not, this is not heavy construction, and, you know, we think we're going to have this done by mid to late January.
Thank you, sir. Do any commissioners have any comments at this point?
No.
Starly, Greg?
No.
Anything else to add, Marty?
No, I think the application's complete.
Okay. I shouldn't approve site plan thirteen eighty-two. Motion, approve Site Plan 1382. Advocate Fuel Cell Energy, Carol Michael Wazowski, location 539 Technology Park Drive. Proposal fuel cell test facility upgrade. Someone to make that motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Thank you, Greg. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Good luck.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes, sir.
If I, if I could, I just want to thank you on behalf of my company, and if I could offer a personal remark. Mr. Connor and I crossed paths in a previous life a number of years ago where we earned, I think, one another's professional respect, and I would just like to offer my thanks and appreciation and compliments for the way he's handled this matter. He guided us marvelously, and I think we, to the extent that we showed up prepared this evening, it's, it's largely a reflection on his guidance and that of the mayor. So, thank you to all of you.
Thank you very much for that comment. We're very proud of Marty, too. All righty. All right. Moving on to agenda item number six, B, discussion, possible future zoning regulation changes. We're looking at number one, a new section for wireless communication facility. We're setting up public hearing October 13th. Jeremy Leifer will be here to explain some of the parameters of that.
And just so I can let the commission know, the rationale for that, that's that addendum section that we have of our regulations that was originally covered cell towers and the antennas, and now with this new 5G technology, we're going to start seeing some of these smaller antennas along roadways and that. So, our intention is to get something in the regulations now so that you have the ability to review some of these projects. So, Jeremy Leifer, the Assistant Planner, has been working hard on updates. He's, he's attended some seminars on this. So, we'll have him here if you decide to set the public hearing for the October meeting. He'll be present to review that with you, because it's not an easy read.
So, do I have a motion to put that on the October 13th agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Diane. Do I have a second?
I, I'll go ahead, or Starley did.
Thank you, Starley. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Both, so moved. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six, B, Section 5.1 Accessory Apartments Amendments per CTPA 21-29. We're looking to put a public hearing in place for October 13th. Marty, any comments on that?
Yes, the, the purpose behind that was to bring our accessory apartments in line with the recently approved state statutes regarding what they call ADUs or accessory dwelling units. So, that was part of the Implementer Bill that took effect in July. So, I just want to bring our regulations up to speed with what the state statutes say. So, the recommended date for that public hearing would be at the October 13th meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Diane. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Both, so moved. Moving on to agenda item number six, B, number three, Section 5.19 Temporary and Limited Moratorium on Cannabis Establishments. Marty has already sent this information out to the Council of Governments. We're looking to set up a public hearing for this on September 8, 2021. Marty, any comments on that, please?
No, other than, this is such a complicated situation. I think we need to do a lot of work. We have to hear from the citizens of Torrington, what they, how they feel on it. We've had some conversations, city staff and the mayor with the police chief. So, it's something we don't need to rush into, because although people have a right to, you know, have a certain amount of marijuana, right now, they're unable to purchase it from a retailer. And, you know, the only thing is, you know, we do have a medical marijuana facility, but that, that's not, that doesn't really, that's not affected at this point. They can continue to operate the way they have been. So, I think it needs some time and some efforts by everybody to carefully consider whether or not we want to have retail operations and whether we want a production facility. So, this will give you the time that I think you need. So, that's my recommendation that we hold a public hearing, because we have to implement a moratorium, we have to have a public hearing, just like we will on any change to the regulations. So, I would suggest we do that public hearing on September 8. And we have, as the chairman stated, already sent the proposed moratorium to the Council of Governments for their review and comment.
Thank you, Marty. So, do I have a motion for the September 8th meeting date?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Diane. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Greg. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving on to agenda item number six, C, zoning and light violation update. Marty, do you have anything?
I don't have any new updates. We'll have memos from the light officer and the zoning officer for your September meeting.
I did see a little blurb in the paper that one property was acquired, they're looking to demolish it.
That's correct, yeah.
Right.
Well, I have one piece of information that you might be interested in, and that is that the case on 70 Red Oak was supported by the court, so that, that's going back up, back on for sale. So, it's a foreclosure by sale, and it's going back on auction 10/2.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item number seven, correspondences. A, Army Corps of Engineers, a letter dated 8/9/21 regarding Greenbrier Estates, Wimbledon Gate and Ninety Hill Gate. This was a correspondence to the owner. Marty?
Yeah, I just thought that I would include it in your package and make it part of the public record, just because when we had that application for apartments there, there was discussion about Army Corps engineers and what the status was. So, I thought that was, receiving a copy of that from the Army Corps was important for the commission to receive. There's no action for you to take on it. I just thought that you would want to have that information, so I shared that with you.
Thank you, Marty.
Thanks.
Marty.
Yeah?
Diane. So, can you just briefly explain that memo as far as the fill violation?
Well, he didn't, he didn't personally, but, sorry, hold on, I'm sorry. My grandson, four years old, wants to know where you are. Sorry about that. That is the best thing in my life right now, this four-year-old grandson. Talk to you later. Basically, the Army Corps said there was a violation many years ago when there was some fill placed in a federal wetlands area, and that situation apparently hasn't been completely resolved to their satisfaction. So, that's basically what the letter is to the current property owner.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Time is 7:37. Moving on to agenda item number eight, a German.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Both, so moved. Have a good evening.
See you, guys. Bye.
Thank you.